Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Rittner Board of Education meeting for September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I am looking for a motion to call our meeting to work. I'd like to move to excuse Dr. Venet-- Dr. Sorry. Oh, she's gonna thank you for that one. Vanessa Enriquez-Cumpa.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Dr. Allen Wilson?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Slonis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGarden?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So now I am looking for a motion to adopt our agenda. So moved. But I need-- I'm sorry. 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 We need to actually amend our agenda to pull from the consent agenda items our policy edits. So I'm looking for a motion to amend the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
And now I'm looking for a motion to adopt our amended agenda. After we vote, Mrs. Slonis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGarden?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Allen Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Madam President, at this time, I move that we vote to on the amended agenda for this evening.
Second. Mrs. Slonis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGarden?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Allen Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Now, we have some friends and visitors here that are gonna help us with our Pledge of Allegiance.
Nice.
Come to the front, and you can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Come on, Stacy, let's go.
Hey, take him with you, let's go.
I'm gonna have fun with this. How goes a lot of fun with this?
Come on up, come on up, everybody, come on. You can come up too. It's not just for kids anymore, come on. Come on.
Rosalie, will come up front, because you're shorter than me. Not by a minute, but a hour, so go with that. No fun in there, camera? All right. Can you put your hands on the heart?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
All right.
There's stuff there. I got something for you.
Good job.
Get your certificate.
Anybody else?
I think I see.
All right, we will move to one point zero five, School of the Month. I've learned elementary, and I'll come forward. These are shy people tonight. Well, we are very thankful to be able to be here this evening and talk to you a little bit about Studies Weekly, which is our resource that we're using for social studies this year. I'm sure as a board, as a CNI department, was going through the curriculum revision and review and the adoption process that you got to hear a little bit more of the technical side of the resources and heard, like, from the company standpoint and the CNI department, what resource materials would do for our social studies curriculum. We wanted to share our students' viewpoint of how they feel it's going in the classroom. We were really fortunate last year that we had four different classroom teachers who piloted the Studies Weekly materials in their classrooms. Three of them are here with us this evening. So all of the students that we brought with us this evening had one of the teachers behind us. So they got to experience the materials last year during the pilot, and then they started this year using the materials as well. As we go through the presentation, you'll see them using the materials in class. So you can kind of see what that looks like when it's implemented. But I do want to introduce the people that I've brought with us this evening. I've got Lily Radasovich, who's one of our fifth grade students. Rosalie Ward, who's in fourth grade. Lydia Simi, who's one of our third graders. Major's behind her, Major Owens, is one of our fourth graders. Jayden Campbell is one of our third graders. And then I have our teachers, Ms. Woszlewski and Mr. Lucker and Ms. May. We'll take just a moment to share their perspectives as well on the program. So we always want to go back and touch base on our vision. And I think in the world of education, and particularly elementary education, we hear a lot about literacy, we hear a lot about math, and even with some of our accountability, we hear about science, but we don't always hear so much about social studies. But I think social studies is a great connection to both our vision and our mission here in the Rittner School District. So you can see as a part of our vision, we talked about productive citizens. And so much of social studies is looking at what it means to be a citizen, whether it's through government studies or whether it's through history and how citizenship developed, or whether it's through looking at different cultures and accepting people who may not be exactly like us. So much of our vision is connected to what we do in social studies. And then again, when you look at our mission and we talk about solving problems in a diverse global society, again, so much of what we're learning about is so directly connected to the work that we're hoping to do for our students as they become young adults and citizens of the world as well. Mr. Allen will share just a second how it connects to our equity statement.
Yes, and so we all know that equity, it simply means meeting students where they are as they are. And the Social Studies Weekly curriculum, it aligns directly with our equity statement. The social studies curriculum is committed to promoting equity and access for all students. Diversity is an asset to all communities and should be celebrated and nurtured. All students should have representation and culturally authentic mirrors of themselves in the classroom. In addition to the mirrors while seeing themselves, or reflection of themselves, it also is a benefit when they are given access to windows so they can look into other cultures and other value systems so that they can develop a broad perspective of the world.
So at this point, we're really gonna turn it over to our students to talk about their experiences. And so I'm gonna start with Lily, Lily's gonna start us off.
Last year, we learned how to use the Studies Weekly materials. There were online components and paper components.
We were on the computers all the time. There's a Studies Weekly app on my computer, we watch videos and listen to videos.
We talked about the articles in the newspaper they gave us.
We took short quizzes on the computer. We had to get the answers to the questions right away, telling if that's right or not.
We used the magazines. Our magazines had maps in them. Mr. Lucker hung his own maps on the wall, but bigger.
So, you can see they've got quiet voices. I don't know if you were able to hear some of the things that they were sharing. But they were sharing a little bit about how the Studies Weekly materials has both, like, online resources that they can get on and listen to parts of the text or articles being read aloud to them, and there's some activities. Like Lydia was saying that there's some short quizzes they can take in the moment and get direct feedback whether their responses are correct or not. And then there's the paper piece of it. So they have these magazines that they take with them, and they can circle them and cut them and do all sorts of different activities with them. So I'm gonna turn it back to them, we'll use the microphone this time. But they talked about what their favorite parts were last year as they were exploring the materials.
I liked the real ads. They liked the real ads, it was easy to focus on and kept my interest.
I loved breaking on the computer.
I really like articles too. I really like the articles, including the six things.
I really like the magazines because we didn't have to take a long time finding pages in a book and it was a lot easier to carry around.
So I asked them a little bit about what they learned last year because they did have a good portion of the year where they were able to experience the materials. And this is what they remembered learning. Jayden?
Each grade are different things, but they all connect to history, economics, geography, and culture, and government.
Last year, I learned what the three branches of government were.
I learned about places around the world.
Those are the stages of government, including our symbols, the balls of evil and uncle's fist.
We learned about geography, we learned about the compass roads, and looked at maps of the world.
So then we spent a little bit of time, we pulled up their learning modules for this school year, and we reviewed them a little bit, and they got to pick out what they're looking forward to finding out more about this school year. Give it off the video first.
We got to look over what we went to learn this year, and what we must have learned about.
I know a little about the civil war, so I'm looking forward to learning more.
I want to know more about economics.
I want to learn more about the government.
And I want to learn more about geography.
I want to learn more about history. I know this year we will learn about the American Revolution.
So I wanted to take just a minute to turn it over to the teachers as well so they could share a little bit of their perspective about what they're seeing from the students as well.
One of the things I really like about the curriculum this year and college in the last year is how engaging it is for the kids. And even have the books, it was a little bit harder for them to understand the text, read the text. And then when we learned our Native American unit, the kids were really excited that that was actually tied into Missouri and how it encompasses where they live, and they really enjoyed that part.
I really appreciate how the curriculum has them engaging in social studies in all different ways. So they're reading, but they're also discussing, and they're writing, and they're using social studies tools like maps. And I think that there's also some novelty to using the newspapers and reading online, which are the same ways that, like, you or I would engage in our community, in our world.
I think the biggest draw for me to this program was them engaging as citizens in their community. It had a very easy tie into what we're doing now with our module of History of Rittner. We're able to discuss a little bit more in depth about geography and economics of the Rittner area, so they're able to really apply their personal lives as well.
So we thank you for your time this night, this evening. We wanted to open it up for any questions that you might have for the students as well. They're kind of prepared and ready for you to ask them some of your thoughts or what you're wondering about the experiences they're having as well.
The magazines and the newspapers, when they read those, do they then discuss them amongst each other?
Do you guys want to talk about, like, what you guys do with the magazines and these things?
I mean, it's not a teacher-led thing, it's like a small group discussion. So I've found that if the teacher's involved in the discussion, it's mostly the teacher talking to them about, did you find this, did you read that? But when they talk to each other, it's more on an equal basis, and they end up learning a little bit more because they're not afraid to ask that fellow student a question.
I would say in my classroom, also the classroom, fourth grade classrooms, we, the teachers introduce the topic, we do a ten-minute mini lesson, and then the students are allowed to go in and then just go in small groups. And then we come back and do a home group where they are sharing what each person learned. And I like to sometimes, I will go in and tell them what you learned from your partner. And that builds their listening skills because they know that they might have to tell me not what they talked about, but what their partners talked about. And that really builds their communication and listening and speaking skills.
And I think if you look at some of the pictures, so this bottom one here is from Mr. Lucker's classroom. So you can see they're kind of all starting off on a circle, like he's introducing a topic. But then they have the magazines laying in front of them, and they can interact with each other. So for example, on that day, they were going over some vocabulary that was associated with geography. And so he would read a little bit, ask them to find some of the words that were new to them, underline them, and talk to their friends about what they were seeing or what they were seeing the definition to be. So that's kind of some of the activities. There are a few others here. I know Ms. Kirkwood is in this picture, and so the magazine accompanied the online component. And so as she was kind of instructing with the board, the kids have the newspaper right in front of them so they could manipulate it and read along with the text that she was going. A few other pictures. So a lot of it, again, they can do some online reading as well, that's kind of what you see there. And then there's, this one is, there's a person that's interacting online with the magazines as the kids are as well too. So kind of showing them how to use the magazines and things like that. So it does really offer a variety of ways to give students new information that we would have typically just read in a textbook as they was growing up. So I was gonna ask the teachers, so do you, I don't know how long both of you have been teaching, but do you see that the engagement is different with this program compared to what we've had before?
I would say a thousand percent we're engaged in the large group. And I think the other text was a lot, was dense, and it was not really engaging. Here, the small articles are broken up into pieces. And then I really like the fact that there is a whole lot of component where they can almost play like a video game to practice what they've learned, and they earn little coins, and they're all, they'll get to decorate like a treehouse. And so they're all like, really getting the questions right because you don't get coins if you're getting them wrong. So it's not like I can just go guess and try to get to pleasure them. You actually have to get it right to earn coins, to earn money, to buy the things. And so they're all about earning money, tracking the money, which we go into math because now they have to figure out how much they have to spend, and what they have left, and what they're gonna do to earn more, so.
And I feel like being a second grade to a more primary level, even in the primary levels, there's a lot deeper conversations that we're able to have. Like you said, not just me talking with the kids, but them talking together. I think that's really important, especially for those primary grades, getting that kind of in the flow as they're younger and having those deeper conversations without me facilitating it.
I notice a lot more anticipation and excitement too because instead of getting out that same textbook every day, they have a new newspaper. And there's kind of a question of what is this new newspaper going to be about?
So to our students, do you guys ever go home and tell your families what you learned today in social studies?
Brave girl, good girl.
Yes, I often go home and tell my parents about what we learned in social studies today.
What do we do with the newspapers when today's newspapers are done? You have to take them home?
Yes.
Right? Isn't that great?
Is that a good way to kind of have a conversation with your parents? Do you ever show your parents the newspapers that you used that week?
Ever go up to them and say, hey, did you guys know? Says it right here in the newspaper.
I'm honestly really glad that you guys are joining this program this hour. When I was younger, the way I learned history was actually from my dad. I did not learn from those textbooks. My dad was an historian, so he was the one who, like, took me all over the place, and we learned about the local history. I'm so glad that you guys are incorporating your local history because I was always interested in that. And I wanted to know what my community's history was. And I, like, I didn't, I appreciate the country's history, but I wanted to know what my community was going through and what led to our problems today and stuff. And so I'm really glad that you guys are incorporating the local history and stuff.
It definitely makes it more personal for the kids. Thank you all very much. Thank you for having us.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. Would the families of the students also stand so we can recognize you? Can I get their picture real quick? Oh, yeah.
You can take one real slow, too.
Thank you, everyone.
One, two.
Thank you all very much. So we will move on to one point zero six. I'd like to report that the Board of Education met in closed session on August third, two thousand and twenty-three, and September seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, to discuss personal agenda items. Moving on to one point zero seven, public comments. We do not receive any public comments. So we will move on to two point zero one, our president's report. So it's that time for Rittner's Homecoming. The homecoming is this weekend. Tomorrow evening, we will celebrate the four newest Hall of Fame inductees, including Charlotte Lloyd, class of nineteen eighty-one, Reverend Dr. William Gansin, class of nineteen sixty-four, Larry Ziegler, class of nineteen sixty-eight, and Dr. Martha Ackman. She is the two thousand and twenty-three Lifetime Achievement Award recipient. On Saturday, the annual parade takes place at nine a.m. The homecoming theme this year is Rittner World Tour. The Huskies take on the Fox Warriors in the Homecoming football game at one p.m. at Moorefield. We are looking forward to a wonderful homecoming week. And I know we've been hearing about some of the Spirit Week activities that have been going on at the high school, so we'll continue on the festivities. Our district is also excited to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, which begins tomorrow and runs through October fifteenth. Our schools have plans to celebrate in a variety of creative ways, including learning about Hispanic culture, influences, and famous people throughout history, as well as the unique and diverse cultures of Latin American countries, including their traditional rituals, clothing, art, music, and foods. Please be sure to check out our website and social media channels to see how each of our schools are celebrating this year.
For Dr. Kilbride tonight, I'd like to recognize donations that students and schools have received from community partners. We're very grateful for our community partners who have supported students with additional back-to-school resources to help them get a strong start to the new two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year. The generosity and compassion towards our students from so many area businesses and faith organizations truly reflect our community's support for all of our students. We were honored to receive donations from SSM Health Paul Hospital, whose employees donated a hundred new clear backpacks for Rittner High School students and filled them with personal hygiene items, earbuds, and school supplies for our students. Additionally, they filled boxes of hundreds of other school supplies. Employees at John Henry Foster Company located near Lambert Airport collected hundreds of school supplies, water bottles, and other items for Kratts and Marvin Elementary students to use this school year. Iveland and Marion Elementary Schools are thankful to Overland Baptist Church for a wide variety of school supplies and to Harmony Church for donating thirty backpacks filled with school supplies plus additional supplies and children's books for classrooms. Marvin Elementary also was the gracious recipient of school supplies by Overland Baptist Church. The school also was able to give away backpacks from a previous donor to many students who needed them during the school's open house. Rittner Middle School received thousands of school supplies from Calvary Unit United Church of Christ at the start of the school year. Thanks to an anonymous donation by an area church, Rittner received a large monetary gift in addition to one hundred new pencil boxes and a hundred composition notebooks for each of our six elementary schools that will help our younger students in need by prepare, in need to be prepared for school. Thank you to everyone who donated school supplies for our students. We truly appreciate their generosity. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Michael Chance. We will move on to two point zero three, our student representative report. Ms. Hope Hope.
Alrighty, so I just wanted to say that I'm really proud of the teachers at Rittner because with all the construction and stuff, there has been like a lot of traffic jams and all that. And they have been giving a lot of leeway, like, they've been giving a good amount of leeway for students running late and stuff. And I mean, I walk fast, but even I occasionally will get that minute late or whatever. And they've been amazing, they've been really supportive, and they were like, I've had it before where I told, like, Ms. Knirby or something, like, there's a traffic jam at this spot. And she was like, okay, just give them like a couple more minutes. It was awesome. A lot of teachers are doing that, and they're amazing. The students are quickly adjusting to the travel delays and stuff. Where, like, people are getting faster and stuff, I feel like the freshmen are quickly adjusting and stuff. The senior section at lunch is amazing, by the way. We are so grateful for it, it is like a blessing in disguise because we've had, it gets so loud in, like, the main eating area, and then, like, if a senior gets overwhelmed, they can just go to the section, and then they can calm down and stuff, and it's been amazing, it's been awesome. There have been complaints about, like, the repetition of cheeseburgers and chicken sandwiches, but I've heard that Dr. Kilbride is on it, and so I talked to him about it today. Because they were, and I literally told a friend right after I had the meeting, hey, I talked to Dr. Kilbride about this, she was like, thank God. So they would be grateful for at least a little bit of diversity or something. And then we are really excited about homecoming this year, there has been a lot of participation. Today, I saw someone dressed up as Uncle Sam for Cultural Day and stuff, that was amazing. There was a lot of kids dressed up for, I had a friend, she dressed up in traditional clothes from her, kind of like, from where her parents are from and stuff. So it was amazing, we've had a lot of participation, and I think everyone's excited for homecoming this weekend.
Thank you, Hope. We will move on to two point zero four, Mrs. Enriquez-Cumpa.
Hello. Love that report, Hope. I don't have anything you need to report, I think aside from the annual conference. I don't know where it's going, but what's coming up, October, November, October, November? November, second, third, fourth. And then there's the regional meeting that's happening on October fourth that I will be attending, so, yeah. We can play the video. Oh, wow, we got it switched.
Just for you?
Yeah.
Welcome to the September edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at the release of this year's state assessment data. The preliminary results released by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education show overall statewide scores are mixed when compared to the prior year. ELA showed small improvements in elementary grades and in high school, and small declines or flattening in middle school. Mathematics scores showed increases in most grades and courses. Science scores maintained with the exception of an increase in biology. Regarding the results, Commissioner of Education Margie Van Deven said the data emphasizes the need to continue deploying state and local resources to best support and promote student learning.
If we're going to embrace literacy, let's do it all the way, right? And this, we know what we need to do there, and let's focus on that. Let's focus on early learning, let's keep focusing on great teachers in every classroom, growing our principals to support those teachers, making sure we have superintendents who are hiring good principals to support the teachers, training our local school board members. These are things that I think we have all agreed are primary to making sure we have a deal.
With schools across the state back in session, don't forget to share the excitement of students, staff, and the entire public school community with your local legislators. Invite your legislators to celebrate the return to school with a day touring your school district. MSBA President Ruth Johnson says that activities such as legislator visits are just part of year-round advocacy efforts.
I truly believe that advocacy begins with relationships. That is something that I began my first year of being on my local board, and it's vitally important that you reach out and get connected with. important that you reach out and get connected with your elected officials at your city level, your county level, your state level, and federal level even. Getting those relationships before you need to have those hard discussions is crucial.
In addition to building relationships with legislators, building relationships and networking with peers is a great way for school board members to learn various approaches to common challenges. With that in mind, MSBA's fall regional meetings are back. Fall meetings return in each of MSBA's 17 regions this September and October. These events give local board members the opportunity to learn and network with colleagues from their part of the state. Sign up for your region's meetings and come ready to play. MSBA's Leadership Development Team has created an engaging and educational challenge where members will team up and work together to answer school board scenarios. To find the date and location of your region's meeting, visit the MSBA website. And it's not too late to register for the 2023 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators and the Missouri Association of School Business Officials. The conference will be held November 2nd through the 4th in Kansas City. The event will once again feature numerous breakout sessions and workshops, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state, along with a great lineup of general session speakers. The conference will also feature the education expo, the student showcase, and much more. Visit the MSBA website for more information. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we will see you in October for the next MSBA Board Report. As we wrap up, here are some closing thoughts specifically for board members from MSBA President Ruth Johnson as we start a new school year.
I would just say to other local board members, enjoy what you do. This is a journey that will change you, and you will see public education in a completely different way. You will see that students are truly what matters most, and everything that we do as a board member should revolve around is what we're doing, is what we're deciding, making it better for students to learn every day.
Thank you. Has did everyone RSVP for the October 4th meeting? Do you have what you need for your RSVPs?
Yes.
We will move on to 2.05, Special School District Report. Mr. Robby.
Just a couple of things. One, the next governing council meeting will be Monday, the 25th. And then having some conversations with Ms. Faust and Ms. Hodd, just timing-wise with my schedule, doing the local PAC has become a little cumbersome, so I have stepped back from that. So if you know of anybody that's interested in helping to continue on our PAC here for Rittner, please be sure to reach out to myself or one of them with some recommendations.
Thank you. We will move on to our business items. 3.01, the annual adoption of our equity statement. Ms. Evelyn Killian.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So as we are aware, we started adopting our equity statement annually in 2020, so this is our time for annual adoption. And this year, we don't have any new edits, but we do want to just have a little bit of a conversation around what's in our equity statement to make sure that it is indeed what we still believe in and what we want to say. So here's our vision, of course, and our mission. And because we are adopting the equity statement, we just kind of put the definition here, which is a broad overview. And last year, you'll recall, we added ability. The year before, we added gender identity. And where we are now is at a point of just maintaining, or if we need to make adjustments, making adjustments to our equity statement. So this is where we started when we thought about what we wanted our equity statement to be about, is thinking about what would have to be true to ensure that the tenants of our equity statement support every student every day. That was our initial conversation. And so this evening, we want to think around, this question is a couple of questions, and we're soliciting their responses before we recommend an adoption. So how does our equity statement help to reduce the assumption issues that come before the board represent the beliefs and experiences of our entire community? So when assumptions, what kind of assumptions are made when issues arise, and how do we minimize the assumption that this is an issue that is happening for everyone? Or are we finding out that it truly is something that is affecting more people than just the one person who may have presented it?
So for me, I think it's the, kind of what Ruth Johnson was talking about when you talk about building relationships, so doing your due diligence to have conversations with other stakeholders than just individuals that may be presenting. I mean, I know we have our administrators that present, but then also like as a board member, it's one of our goals that we try to work on, should be trying to work on, is just engaging in relationships with the community, and that community can look like students, it can look like staff, it can look like teachers, so that we can get a broader understanding and not necessarily just going off of what's presented to us.
So those community connections?
Yeah. Sorry, that was a long way to say that.
One of the things I always like to think of is like when somebody brings something, it's like maybe even reaching out, asking those other people in the community what their experience is, not necessarily bringing it, "Well, somebody sent this to us, and so what do you think about that?" But just kind of wording it so that way it opens up that conversation with others, so you can really see if it is coming, if it is other people's thoughts, if it is their concerns, and really just trying to find. I am one that believes in facts over emotion sometimes. I let my emotions get the best of me, but it's like, okay, really, when you go back, you have to go to the facts, and really sitting down, opening those community conversations, and reaching out to others to get everybody's point of view.
So really looking deeply to see what the issue may be, and really how it is affecting and where it's affecting.
Yeah. I think the fact that we, you know, just reading like your definition, the definition here of what equity in Rittner means, if we truly are living that out and saying that every voice is valued, sought, and embraced, then I think it leads me to believe that when an issue is brought to an administrator, to a teacher, or someone, they are operating off of the assumption that like, I may not be experiencing that, but your point of view is valid, and it's embraced. So two things can be true at the same time. So maybe I haven't ever had a student have X, Y barrier, but you're telling me that you are, and therefore it's true, like it is your truth, and we are now going to work to solve that. And so I think that if at the micro level that's happening, in the classroom that's happening, and every interaction in our relationships that we're building that's happening, then I think as a board, we can have more trust that what's being presented is coming from a place of authentic like relationships. Also, yeah, I may not have experienced that, or maybe other students haven't experienced that, and still one person is, and so we have to validate that as well.
So honoring voices, validating them, be it one, many, whatever, whoever the issue, whatever the issue is, it's, we need to recognize it's there. So one other piece of this is thinking about how our equity statement supports making decisions as close to the issue as possible. So trying to make sure that when we are looking at an issue, that we're staying as close to it as opposed to, "Well, I heard this from that place, and this place, and that place," and a variety of things that may have mushroomed out, as opposed to just looking at what is happening in that space in that moment, and being direct with who's being affected by whatever that issue may be.
Now, sometimes, we, as we sit up at the top of the food chain, as it were, we make decisions, we want to make decisions for the better good of the whole organization. But sometimes, the whole organization needs to step aside so this one individual's needs can be taken care of. And I think our equity statement is trying to tell us that we don't make those broad decisions for 6,000 kids as much as we have to make those decisions for that child, and this child, and that child. What is best for each and every one of them individually? We're not talking, we're talking equity then, being equal. So what do we do? And I just talked to the parents before the meeting started, it's like, we both share an equal part in your child's success here. Your child, not all of them, your child, your child, your child. And I look at it, like I try my best to look at it like that. What is best for the young man who's standing there and the young girl who's standing there? All at the same time. What do they need? What tools can I give them so that they're successful?
So to the greatest extent possible, removing those barriers for every child, to make sure that every child is getting what they need.
Wouldn't we do that as a parent? And we are their parents. We took home 66,000 kids, and we're responsible for 66,000 kids' education, not just kids in Rittner's district, but children, those individuals. Each and every one, we answer to those kids if we didn't live up to their needs.
Well, I think one of the things we strive for is when we're interacting with others is really listening with an intent to understand. And I see that demonstrated by board members all the time, and by administrators and staff members as a means of really trying to understand someone's truth rather than listening as a way to formulate a rebuttal. Even when we have disagreements, I see that, you know, when we're at our best, we're listening, trying to understand people's point of view, and trying to understand where they're coming from so that we can work together.
So really being close to that person, to that issue, so that we can get that clear understanding around whatever the topic may be.
I want to add on that I also think it's important for us to model those pieces, because you have new teachers, you have teachers who've come from different schools, so making sure that we model those things so that they can see, oh, this is, you know, how Rittner does it, this is, you know, where I'm dedicated to. So, and I also think when you model it to teachers, you also model it to students, because it's not just opening up the eyes of everybody that works for, for us, for Rittner, but it's opening up the eyes for even the children to learn, to embrace it also. You know, knowing their peer needs a little something more than what they may need, that's important for children to understand, too.
So really kind of live our statement as opposed to just, we have a statement, check a box, move on with life.
Right.
Yeah, I also think it's very important to reiterate that this is a very fluid statement. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Vanessa, did you hear? Wow. Sorry about that, man. Totally virtual here. But to me, I think it's so important because, you know, at the beginning of our training, we had the children standing at the fence, some had a box to see over the fence. But the truth of the matter is, is that 10 years down the line, it may not be the same fence. And so we have to think about this in terms of how it can grow and mature as a statement as well.
Right.
And I think it's so important to still keep it to where we are looking at it, very diligently, reading through it every single year to make sure if there are some changes or adjustments, or things that have happened, or some things come up, so that we can do that. And that fluidity, I think, is so important.
So staying active and current with our equity statement, so it really does reflect our values, our goals, and that it really is aiming to support our students to the greatest extent possible.
Absolutely. I think it should, it's a centerpiece for us because we're still growing.
So this is just a reminder that these questions are in Policy ACJ around equity. Thinking about as we're making decisions, we always reflect on whom does it benefit? Does it different, does this differentially impact various groups? What can be included or decreased, or to decrease, eliminate disparities, and what other language needs to be clarified in anything that we do? So having said that, and having had some conversation around our statement, making sure that it is still the statement that we want it to be, we are seeking to re-adopt the equity statement for the 23-24 school year.
I'd like to make a motion to re-adopt the equity statement for the 2023-2024 school.
Second.
Mrs. Emery Gispinblak?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Absolutely.
Mrs. Lomis?
Yes.
Mrs. Stigard?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to 3.02, Special School District Partnership Agreement. I believe we have this Julie Condon, and just thank you both coming to the board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Angie, she's going to take the lead on a lot of this presentation, but we do collaborate, so I'm here to help with answering questions.
IDA requirements have, in order to meet the IDA requirements, Desi has the Missouri State Plan, and the State Plan includes regulations specific to special school districts, and that's the Regulation 15. And then also talks about what school districts have to do to be compliant with IDA requirements. So in order to meet those federal and state requirements, there is a local compliance plan, and then, and that gets sent to Rittner every year, and is sent by the legal and compliance department, and then that has to be approved by the board. In order to meet the state requirements, there's also a general assurance document that also gets sent to you, and it goes over other components of our district agreement that puts us in compliance with IDA. This visual just kind of shows from the larger picture from IDA than the State Plan, the local compliance plan, and then as specific as the general assurance document, and then district policies and procedures, and how they all relate to each other. So the partnership agreement specifically includes knowledge, sorry, it's supposed to increase your knowledge and awareness of the expectations for both parties. It outlines some inclusive and collaborative approaches to make sure that we are meeting the needs of students, and it goes over the different areas by including those in the seven categories, and it guides the conversations between SSD and the partner districts. So there's the different areas. So it breaks it apart by staffing, and then the teaching, learning, and accountability is often what you would think of as like the professional development and learning department. And then there's the collaboration of responsibilities, which is what I was talking about earlier with the local compliance plan, the general assurance document, and then there's a new principal and coordinator collaboration tool, as well as student services, data and technology, the transportation that we provide, and then the career and technical education components. For assessment and evaluation, so we do try to assess how we're doing on these each year, and then we also have action steps that we come up with. Julie and I usually go over those, and we talk about how we're both fulfilling the agreements and areas that we're concerned about, and areas where we're doing well. So for the purposes of this, both SSD and the partnerships, or the partner districts all agree to those three different policies and policies. So for the partnership agreement, it does require signatures by, and approval by the superintendent. Superintendent of Special School District, as well as Ritner, the SSD Board President, your Board President, and then the Partner District Governing Council member.
Which is new, we haven't had that in the past.
Right, they just added that from this year. So the action steps that we have identified are to collaborate with the CNI Department, which is an ongoing process, but we are working with them on implementing the CBL model for students with IEPs. Denise and her department have worked hard on getting those in place for the general education students. We've been working alongside them and also figuring out how to accommodate students with IEPs within that same model.
And I think it's important to note, we now have two full-time instructional coaches that are partnering with Ritner and Special School District.
Our other goal is to improve student support through increased collaboration of student success plans and monitoring of student behavior trends at the secondary level, and looking at discipline documentation and referral levels. It's, it's more of a concern at the middle and high school level, trying to decrease the number of discipline referrals as well as hearings and behavior incidents that are concerning, which I'm sure Julie would love.
Yes, and part of that too is they may have a plan in place coming through an IEP, but it hasn't always been shared, or people don't know what is in that plan. So this is a big area of opportunity for our secondary buildings.
So we are currently, we've been uploading those in the student information system too, so people have access to those. Also increasing awareness of disproportionality through, we have, there's SSD Disproportionality Summit that's occurring this year, where principals, assistant principals of the identified schools that are demonstrating the most difficulty around that disproportionality measure will be invited to attend, and that is in October. That will also be attended by the coordinators and myself. I know Rob had asked last time about some evidence, so I just looked back for last year's action plan, and just to kind of review how we did on that, we had identified a goal of scheduling monthly meetings with the liaison and coordinators, and we did meet that. Planning professional development strategically because we wanted to minimize the amount of subs that were having to come in whenever our staff were out at trainings, and we did meet that. We also had a goal around improving staff retention by being more responsive, acknowledging their work. I can tell you that's still an area of focus. SSD, like other districts around the county, you know, we're struggling a little bit with keeping staff and filling staff positions. We do have a survey, an engagement, staff engagement survey each year, and I can tell you that from the fall to the spring of last year, it did, we did improve, staff were feeling recognized, and that engagement did go up. Last year, at the end of the partnership agreement, there is an assessment that we completed last year. Our overall score on a scale of zero to three was 1.87, and that is compared to the county average of 2.83, so we were a little bit lower.
But I do want to say, we're pretty critical. Because we, I always feel like, I'm very critical when we do, we could do a little bit better than what I believe that we're, we're doing.
That's true, but also at the same time, we're still critical this year, and we went up from 1.87 to 2.2. So that was from the previous year, and then last year, our rating for how we did last year was 2.2. We were attending to some more of those collaborative components. So the new components, so last year when I presented, it was with the new components of the partnership agreement, and there were three areas that were particularly highlighted in the presentation. One was about the director and coordinators meeting with the partner district superintendent to review how we did on our goals and for him to be able to give feedback. We did do that, the coordinators, myself, Julie, and Dr. Kilbride all met and went over what the coordinators had accomplished for the year, and talked also about what we planned to do for this year. The next one was the director and coordinators would present at the beginning of the year their goals in the areas of immersy, literacy, and social emotional. That one's a little different, we don't just have one way of doing that. So far, the coordinators have collaborated with the building principals on their building CSIP plans, so that's one component. The other is, we do our own administrator growth plans, so we want to show growth in each of our areas, and those are currently being written and revised, and once those are finished, we would share them also with Dr. Kilbride and Julie. And then category three was about attending PAC meetings, and we had, I attended all of those, the coordinators attended the first one, and then they were rotating through on the others. We had four PAC meetings last year, but there were administrators at each one of those. The Principal and Coordinator Collaboration Tool is a document that had been used previously, I want to say about five years ago. What it does is the coordinator sits with the principal, and they go through some key measures, making sure that the principal and the coordinator understand and agree on some things around decision-making, staff supervision, their roles in the building, and also working on like hiring staff, evaluating staff, and how they access resources. So we had used it previously, we hadn't used it for a couple of years, stopped it mostly, I think, because of COVID, but now they've actually gone back and revised it a little bit, and will be using that again this year. Again, the purpose of that is just to set some goals and objectives and make sure that there's a clear plan for collaboration in a way that we can go back and look at whether we feel like we each, you know, did our part, and whether the needs were met, and have a way to try to objectively look at our roles and whether we're holding each other accountable and, and doing the parts that we agreed to do.
But I think the tool is important too, because the coordinators and the principals get so busy during the day, and they're running, 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 that oftentimes they might just be talking in the hallways, but this really says, you know, you need to sit down, talk through things, so it does open up lines of communication.
Yes, and on that, they will be going over key areas like how well they work together on like the hiring practice, or around identifying students, working on that evaluation process, things like that. They will rate themselves, and then they will go back and revisit that periodically and see how they're doing on accomplishing their goals for that work. So the important dates for us for this year are, this partnership agreement is to be presented in October, and then approved by the Board and submitted back to SSD by October 31st. The general assurance document is to be back October 1st, and then the principal collaboration tool, they will take baseline data in the fall, and then they would be doing a final review by the end of June, it would be submitted. Do you have any questions?
I just wanted to say real quick, I pleased when I asked last week to have the presentation on it and move it from consent. As I was going through, I just knew as part of the PRC, the Public Review Committee from last year, that we helped draft this document. It was just, I knew there was a lot of changes to it, so I just wanted to kind of go over. So as I pulled it and was reading through it, I was very impressed with a lot of the "as evidenced by" that we could actually check off and mark and go, okay, we're on a very strong slide here. I did just have a couple of questions. Can we, what would you say, you don't have to give me an answer tonight, but like the percentage of general ed teachers that are attending IEPs? Where are we at on that?
So we have general, at least one general education teacher at every IEP unless somebody calls in sick. But usually then we can even get somebody in there, even if it is like a, what we call like an encore or special area teacher that can come in.
So having some conversations with parents as through all of this, there is some concern from some of our parents on getting those gen ed teachers in there and getting specials teachers in there. A lot of what they're hearing, pushback from the buildings is, well, we have to find a sub to cover a class. I get it, and subs are very hard to come by right now. Trust me, I get that 100%, but we've got to be sure that if those children are receiving services from that general ed teacher, that they are in those conversations and being part of those IEPs, and so they understand exactly what is being involved and what's expected of them, and how they have to modify and change things. So, and then my only other question for you was talking about post-graduation. We put such a focus on post-graduation from the general education side, but what are we looking at on trying to increase our VSP and things like that, being sure that we're setting up our special ed kids for a successful future?
So Nathan has expanded some of the options for the vocational program, looking at different sites. He's also created what we jokingly call our own Amazon warehouse. He's gathered materials that were around the district. For instance, we use different programs that we have protocols for, and at times we might have more, more in one elementary, and we don't have any at the other, and then we're scrambling around trying to find them. So he's getting them all together at the high school in one area, and then letting students work as if it's like a warehouse. So he's got the form that they can place orders, and the students will go pull materials, package them up, and send them out. So it's like a pre-vocational kind of task.
Can you explain what VSP is to everyone? They may not know what VSP is.
I'm sorry, I didn't take it with me.
Exactly. The Vocational Skills Program, so it's looking at different vocational options for students. In addition, I know they have the coffee cart that they do, they also do laundry for some of the athletics, just different things, trying to teach them life skills, but also other vocational skills. So in looking at those, you know, the pre-voc skills like the coffee cart, and then that kind of Amazon warehouse kind of thing, and then going like to Schnucks or those job sites and working with that as well, trying to increase the number we have of those, and then the number of kids that go out.
But I also know when students graduate, so students can get services up until the age of 21. So we have a program where once they leave Ritner High School, many of the students will go, let's say, to the airport, Children's Hospital, different hospitals, different sites around the county and city where they work and they continue to get speech, social skills, they get work skills. So many, many of our Ritner students go to those programs until they're 21. So those are great, great programs, and...
There's also the tech, the tech schools that students both within and without IEPs can go to to actually learn some skills like cosmetology, nursing, those kind of things.
Do we have, do we have many going to the South Tech?
No, I think they're pretty much going to the North.
Just the North. I was gonna say, I think they pretty much made both, both schools having pretty much the same programs, except maybe one or two.
And just by geographic distance and busing them, and all they would go to the North.
Right.
Any other questions?
Madam President, I then move that we approve the SSD partnership agreement as presented this evening.
Second. Mrs. Emery Gispinbl?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Lawness?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Can they hear you?
We have an agreement.
We are going to move on to 3.03, Student Resource Officer Agreement. Mr. Dwight Lindhous wants to present.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you know, Ritner is fortunate to have strong relationships with all of our local police departments, specifically St. Anne, St. John, and Breckenridge Hills, provides school resource officers, or SO, SROs in some of our schools. Two years ago, the Board approved a revised MOU, or Memory of Understanding, with those three departments. That includes important language that is more in line with our mission vision, and especially our equity statement. So the partial cost for this year, for St. John provides one SRO at Ritner Middle School. The cost to the district was $50,000 this year, and then Breckenridge Hills provides one SRO stationed at Husky Academy. There'll be no cost to the district this year because of a grant that the police department initiated and received. And we've been working closely with St. Anne to finalize the details on that MOU. We plan on bringing that back to the Board in October. So tonight, I'm recommending the Board of Education approve the continuation of the SRO agreements with St. John and Breckenridge Hills for a total of $50,000 for this current year.
And we have the same officers, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Ready? Okay. Our motion to approve the 2023-2024 SRO agreements as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Lawness?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGardner?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Emery Gispinbl?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. We will move on to 3.04, Personnel Recommendations. Dr. Mike Wiltchance.
U.D. Board Members. Here to present, I believe, the items 1 through 43. Ultimately, any questions or comments you may have, and ultimately seeking your approval.
I guess maybe, I got a question on 26 and 27. And I guess I would ask more, Dr. Green, are you good with that?
Do you want to come up?
Sorry to put you on the spot. Yes. Okay.
I'd like to ask how many students we have in our Broer Young Program?
Currently?
Yes.
Participating, or those in, at the university?
Participating at Ritner.
When I spoke to Ms. Munen, actually, I spoke to her on Wednesday, because, because we're actually working on the next Broer Young Grant together. I asked her the same question. We have 20 students that participate in some format in the program, and she said to me, some students aren't really sure what they want to do, but they're interested in college visits, and that's okay too. That gets them to explore opportunities, and potentially they will choose teaching, and some do not, but usually about 20.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So during our board present meeting today, I did ask Dr. Kilbride about some of the pursuing another opportunity, individuals that are listed on here, so I don't know, Dr. Wiltchance, if you don't mind sharing just a little bit. You don't have to necessarily share directly, but just some places where people are going, because that was something that came up in our conversation today.
So we do have staff members that leave us and actually do not tell us where they're going, and sometimes we hear about it secondhand or thirdhand of, oh, this is where we hear they're going, and then sometimes they're very straightforward. We have individuals that are accepting positions on our list tonight in neighboring districts Clayton. We have individuals who are accepting positions in industry, say maybe working as an office professional and accepting a position in industry. We also have support staff members who, at least one, that has indicated that she's accepted a position as a full-time teacher in another district. And I'm assuming that's based on the teacher shortage. So that's just a sum of what we've heard.
Do we still have people applying?
We do, yeah.
So we have a decent pool of people that we...
We do, I would say compared to, say, pre-pandemic, it is a slow trickle. We have, for certain positions, certified positions, we have peak seasons, and then certified positions, once you get to August, it's, there's no one there unless you're lucky enough that someone is moving into the area. For support staff positions, it varies. We do use Indeed, and we get quite a few applicants on Indeed. We do use Indeed, and we get quite a few applicants on Indeed, but that can take just a click on a phone. And so I follow up with them, invite them to apply through the district, and then typically about 50% of them do. And so that's another way that we've been able to keep applicants coming our way. I'll be sharing with you in October some of our staff acquisition data. And we still hear from, we survey all of our staff. They hear about Rittner, but don't work for Rittner, are not connected to Rittner. And then our website, those are the three, even more so than Morrie, those are the three big places where people hear about Rittner and decide to apply, based on our entrance data.
Just out of curiosity, number four, did they not share with you where they were going? And the only reason I'm asking, because I was curious, because I'm seeing that position a lot lately. And so I was curious, and it seems, when I went back and looked, that's about number four for Rittner Middle alone in the last two years. I was just curious if there's something going on there or...
I'm not aware of anything going on there that is, that tends to be a position where people at times will, will choose to stay home with family or take care of family, and because they're often, also often people who live right here in the, in the...
I just saw that one, that was quite us, thinking that they were with us, and then that's why I was curious.
This staff member did not give us an indication of what they're doing. Again, I do get secondhand information, and I secondhand heard that they had some family needs that they were going to take care of, but prefer to still potentially work with us as a sub in food service. So again, that that's not official, that's not what they had shared directly with us.
So with 12 and 15, does that fill all of those positions that we had, we tried to add to accommodate some of the needs?
We have one more. I can clarify that tomorrow, but I believe there's one more.
Madam President, if there are no other questions pending, I would move that we accept Personnel Recommendations one through 43 this evening.
Second. Mrs. Lons?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGarden?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Enriquez Pimblet?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We will move on to three point zero five, Board Member Comments. Anyone have any comments that they might share?
Absolutely. I'm never gonna lose a chance to say something here, come on. The Overland Lions Club had their eighty-some-odd annual fair this couple of weeks ago. We had the first weekend after our start of school. And the demographics that Rittner has, where we have almost 30% Latinos in our district now, was very, very prevalent there at the Lions Club Fair. I would say the majority of the people that came there were, were our families from the southern borders. The Latinos came up, and they came there in family groups, big groups, five and six and seven people. And I learned a lot of Spanish, don't know a clue what means, except Latino, Spanish, that means it. But we communicated, it was fun, we got people in there, and they were having a great time. On Sunday night, we were supposed to close down at 10 o'clock. We didn't close down till after midnight because people were still coming in at nine, nine-thirty and such. It was a great time, it was a great community event, you know, and I would encourage everyone to, want to join the Lions Club if you want, we can serve the community. Every dollar that was earned or brought to that fair will be spent here in the Overland-Rittner area by the Overland Lions Club. We'll probably make about, after all said and done, probably about $30,000. And it will, it will go to help kids, adults, families with vision problems, classes, checkups, all those things. That's what our mission is there. Another thing that I just learned about, and Evelyn trained me on this last week, was a mentoring program, though we don't call it mentoring, is of an advisory program, something that's starting here, I think it was first year was last year, Evelyn, is that right?
Yes.
The RAP, RAP program was last year. If any board members want to be part of that, what, briefly what it's about, or anybody else in the whole room wants to do this. A senior, second semester senior, as they go and start working, you would be their advisor, and you would talk to them about issues, problems, opportunities, things work-related, so that you can make them or help them become successful at their job. Okay, you'll have a variety of ways you meet them. You meet them up at the high school for lunch, you talk to them over Zoom. It's, it could be little time impact, but it can make one heck of an impact. Just give them someone outside their family to talk to, create that relationship with these kids. And they're choosing that path, leave school, go to work. So we want to make sure they're as successful as that as the military path, the educational path. I'm not sure, I think there might be four or five mentors or advisors at this point. Training's easy, I got through it, Evelyn walked me through it real easy. She said little words, I understood them all. And I'm looking forward to meeting the, the young person, whoever it is, to, to help mentor them through their beginning of their careers. So if anybody wants to do that, that's an opportunity. And you set up time with them so it's convenient for them and you. Something that you can do as an individual, as much as, as part of the board. But with all the things going on with Rittner and everything, it's just, it's just another exciting start. And I'm just happy to be here.
Anyone else?
I did want to clarify, so in October, Ms. Woods, that's when we would start the new board program?
Yes.
It's called Community. We don't have to do anything but just log in with our login information.
Yes.
All right.
That meeting will be fun, let me tell you.
The day before will be fun, whenever he's trying to log in and read their stuff. It should be the same, like, when I practice, it was the same. Okay. Sure, see. All right. I work in technology. I, I, I understand. I don't know. We're gonna trust the process. Yes, we're gonna trust.
Right. Windows on it. Call 1-800-Help from the clinic.
All right, we will move on to three point zero six, Policy Edits. This is the consent, this is the item that was moved from consent agenda to our business items. And I actually have made this request to move the policy edits. Part of the reason was policy J E C A reflecting back upon our equity statement that specifically outlines those three questions, and I want to read the specific questions, so give me a minute to pull it up, because I closed that out already. So when we look at our equity policy and how it relates to the question of, does this differentially impact various groups, racial and ethnic, gender, LGBTQ+, social, economic, disabled, et cetera? So I personally, I'm just speaking for myself, am personally struggling with the section of policy J E C A where the language has been added surrounding providing ownership and trust, trust ownership of the property for at least the previous four consecutive years, provides proof that the parent or the trust has annually paid. So I'm struggling and feeling like this differentially impacts certain groups. Does Stacy, do we lose Stacy?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I've asked Dr. Kilbride to do some research on this and find out a little bit more background surrounding the rationale for this, as well as to find out if this is also policy language that in many ways may be mandated. So he's going to do some research with our, or has agreed to do some additional research on this language and the rationale for it. She said it doesn't matter. So can we wait until we go beyond this one? Yes. Right. Yes, that's what my ask is, but I just wanted to explain why that policy was pulled, why policy edits were moved from consent to business items. Got it.
So we want to table this particular...
So we want to pull out the J E C A? If we could pull out J E C A, when you go to make your motion, that would be great. Yeah, it is. Stacy, did you hear that before the motion?
Yes, I did, yeah, I was, I heard everything you said, I just like, it blocked out right at that last part.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Are you ready for it? Does anybody have any questions regarding that? And you were talking about the yellow or black section?
So you would like to have a motion that says, I approve the re-approved policy edits J H C, J H G, and G C E A from the list, with the exception of policy J E C A.
Correct.
Second. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Enriquez Pimblet?
Yes.
Dr. Eaton? I mean, Mr.
Vanessa, I made you a doctor earlier. Thank you.
I love that.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
I'm here.
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Lons?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGarden?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Ms. Glover Jones, I'd like to say I appreciate you seeing that and having that pulled out, because after reading it, I'm like, I see what you're saying, so thank you. Thank you. So now we will move on to our consent agenda items, and I'm looking for a motion there. I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 4.01 through 4.06.
Second. Mrs. Lons?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGarden?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Enriquez Pimblet?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
This is unbelievable.
How about, how about one more motion?
This is unbelievable. I was, that's always like...
Y'all are, y'all have your homework done, man.
Nobody's saying anything, I'd like to make a motion to do a jerk.
Second.
Yes.
Mrs. DeGarden?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yeah.
I love my community, I just love serving on this one, I just want it to be known, okay? Yes. Yes, I will vote yes.